Here in the Lee Middle and Old School Library. We are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's orders and finding certain provisions of the old meeting law and general law. Scene thirty A, section twenty. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access. I'm going to call a meeting to order and pursuant to Mass General Law. Scene thirty A, section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording has been made. Please join us.
Not see our friends.
We have nobody here to leave a pledge motion for you. Are you our pledge people? Okay. The missions they cannot be followed schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and moral thinking skills deprived in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do both of these? Mr. Robbin.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Kuscherak.
Here.
Mr. Langwa.
Here.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
And Ms. Strickler.
Here.
All right, next up we have the approval of the February thirty twenty twenty four, the school committee meeting. The motion, don't please. Uh, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, spoken on the review.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do both of these? Mr. Robbin.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Kuscherak.
Yes.
Mr. Langwa.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler.
Yes.
Okay, next up we have public input.
Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items on the seat agenda at this time issued raise will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school. Wherever you want, Matt. Well, again, my name is Matt Farmer. Not again. My name is Matt Farmer. Um, I just wanted to come out tonight. Uh, it came to my attention last week that uh, eighth graders, especially in Lee, could not play for the cross uh, high school program. So I wanted to come in today for a couple of reasons. One, I respectfully ask for a waiver for my son, Aaron, to live in eighth grade. Uh, to be able to play this season for the cross program in months. Um, I would advocate for other, any other eighth graders who wanted to play. Uh, for the same reason. I've been involved in the program for a long time. Uh, we lost our own across program, unfortunately. Most of them to go on board with, but um, because of that, we regionalized and it is it's not, um, you know, it involves a ton of travel, but really just is unnecessary when some could play and one of its whose own policy is to allow a kid to play, especially when uh, they're within the same middle of high school. It's how it would be in the same goal. The other, just as a follow-up to that, I would actually propose that had that policy changed, it just feel like that's not, um, it's not conducive, uh, especially as part of the local crossway. I'm hearing the numbers are not great, um, so having to be able, having the ability to, to have eighth graders who are willing to play, um, I think just helps the program go, um, and I don't think it hurts me for, um, you know, for my son personally, I mean, if it was tall as I am, it got a hundred fifty pounds, he's not gonna hurt, you know. Because now it was basically not small. I appreciate the time, um. I think we've seen what it was.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Is it just eighth graders that are gonna have to look down?
That's what I'm proud of. They're now allowed to, uh, at some point.
Okay.
It's in alignment with, um, places protocol, uh, because most of you have to go. Uh, the cross program shifted over to Lex two years ago, um, between the third season, I believe, at Lex. Um, when we leave the, um, protocols we got for middle school, they were just taking the rest of athletics. It's just a hard family act to get put into it. There's football, there was the cross, we excluded, um, but it's kind of makes sense. And now seems we have shifted over to Lex, so it makes sense to align with their policies. So, if I get any rejects, um, so Brett Larmen, I'm actually the lacrosse coach in Lex. Um, and we actually, we have several eighth graders. So what we do is younger kids who are smaller, we actually take the lower half of the group and we do play JV games, the schools that do have JV programs. My son was an eighth grader when he started, he was actually the starting person in the goal with us. Um, I think last year we had six or seven kids, um. Uh, our first year, uh, when my son was an eighth grader, he was the starting person in the goalie. We also had an eighth grader who was already scored, uh, scored better for the whole year. It was by, uh, first year for that. So the kids can get a lot more out of fun with us. Um, as Matt said, I within the lead program with Matt, um, I sat on the board with Matt for the whole version of county. The reason why this rule also came into effect is that we were trying to protect the lead program from using it. In twenty eighteen, we didn't have a lot of kids. We didn't want all those kids moving up because it was a rule in effect, you can play in the youth program and along JV teams. We tried to separate that. Now without a lead program, um, kids are forced, especially in South County, are forced to sometimes drive all the adults in play. Just to practice. Now they have to go westfield, they have to go to, you know, up into Vermont sometimes to play these games, and it's really a strength, uh, stress on the pack. We have very good programs. It's, uh, I think in the last year, not on wood, I think we've had two injuries in two years. Um, well, my concussion and a fracture around. So it is a well-run program. Um, all the coaches all played college lacrosse with myself. So, um, the kids are very well taken care of. We don't just send out small eighth graders against, you know, six, six kids, you know, we understand the game. Uh, they do protect the kids. So, uh, again, along with Matt, I definitely ask you guys to allow these kids to play. We don't really have a feeder program right now for our Lex team. And this is our feeder program. These kids coming in, we can teach them and get them ready so that, you know, when they are ready, they're really good in the games and they're, you know, fresh and soft and they're ready to go. So like I said, we aren't putting the kids behind, um, smaller kids do not throw against bigger kids. We do let them play against bigger ones.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have our reports and our first thing we're gonna do is student presentation. So we have the Lee Middle and High School peer votes.
I guess I'll stand where? You also can, no, we'll get there.
Way up there. Yeah, front of center people.
Wow. Oh, yeah, you are. Um, well, hi, everyone. Yeah, you can sit up there. This looks good, I think. Um, I'm Dan Quavis. I'm one of the school death and counselors in our district. This is.
I'm Bella Kotek. I'm a senior.
Yeah, Bella's amazing. Um, she's involved in a lot of different things. You've probably seen her in the paper recently. Um, this is Pierre. It's a new class that we started this year. Um, Mr. Gaiman was really supportive in trying this. My wife and I run the class, um, kind of facilitate some of the things we do. Uh, this came from a couple of different reasons. One, kind of to increase the sense of school community, school spirit, um, and then also provide some leadership opportunities for our upperclassmen. Um, as well as some opportunities to develop more relationships for our seventh graders. Right now, just seventh graders we work with, but we hope to. This is a fun video that they made that we wanted to show, and then the next one is the rest of our class, uh, giving some more. Um, so we do run advisory lessons monthly and that usually not quite that loud, but, um.
They're new speakers. We have a chance to test them.
So we can go to the next case, um. Okay, so this one was just each one, uh, kind of just took apart and, um, just for reference, we made all these videos really using our phone and the kids are amazing when using their phones that way.
There we go. I should probably ask some of your students to do this for me.
Yeah, they're amazing. I don't think.
Um, so at the beginning of the year in September, in September, we got to go on a little, um, adventure to Mirrorball and we got to go on a road course to build our trust with each other. And it was really fun. Um, we got to see, like, we went through different challenges together. We helped each other out. Some people cried. Um, but we, we all did it together. It was really fun and it was a really good bonding exercise for all of us.
Yeah, yeah, that was all thoughts of through Mirrorball. They were more than happy to support anything that we do. Um, yeah, it was really cool.
Um, so like one of our, um, mentors, mentors said, we, um, brought back the pep rally, which we've really been lacking in our school recently, like just school spirit in general. So it was really important for us to have all the kids be happy during school hours. Um, thank you, Mr. Riani, for letting us go on the pep rally and for you to. I know. I know the kids really enjoyed. Um, and we do, we, so this was. So we set up like different little projects and stuff like that. So out in the main office, we have our little bulletin board. And whatever the theme of the month is, is what we put on the bulletin board. Um, that was for engaging in the community. Um, we also had a glow day for a school spirit day and Mr. and Mrs. Quavis set up, um, just a glow in the dark room and then Mr. and Mrs. Mathroom. And then for Valentine's Day, we put every single student's name on a heart. Um, this is at three hundred and
Yeah.
Around three hundred students. Yeah, and we put all their names on a heart and we put them on the main office windows and then during their advisory, they like.
And actually, it was way better than a question. Wondering if there'd be any issues. It wasn't, and I don't know. It seemed like it was really sweet. We might try a little more.
Um, we also go to our special education room. We try to go, we've been two or three times and we have done coloring, reading. We did two different bakerings. We did cookies and then for Christmas and we did pancakes and waffles. Breakfast. Um, and then we also have the single picture of our first mentor meeting. Um, we all got with our mentees and we played after staff was with the screen. Really fun. And we got to see which people were competitive. I just like to say I won. And then this was. Um, we got to go up to the elementary school for the second graders, first grade. First grade and do drafts. We got to be people with drafts with them because they were learning all about drafts.
Yeah, that was a nice, uh, collaborative, uh, thing to bring together whole school. Really, really hard to do with schedules and stuff, but, um, it was fun and I think they had a really good time.
That was it.
So just one comment of family. Um, many of us sitting in this room right now, um, who graduated from ten years ago now, remember the peer education program that we had back then under Catherine Ford. Um, this, I think, is going to head in that same direction and become as big and successful as that. I think it's, um, it's a very good addition to the school and, um, thank you, Mr. Quavis, for bringing it up at Pierre and for, um, all the students mentors in the program for doing it.
We're going to need an extension to play a player to put part of your program or.
That is hopefully gonna happen next year.
Okay, next up, we would like to, um, have the bowling. Okay, if you have some points in the time, I would like. I am. I'm gonna say congratulations on the name, uh, state student today. Are any of you seen her? We're there. So, I think, are you gonna play?
I don't think so.
Just recreation.
Um, yeah, I'll probably just do a recreation.
Well, this is very exciting. Matt started the bowling.
Two thousand four.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm on the second one. So this is really exciting. Congratulations. Matt, you've worked really hard to develop a program and you guys worked really hard to do it.
Also, one of the girls individuals would stay.
The answer to the question is Bella competitive.
Twenty-four kids bowl this year. We have two JV teams and I've actually seen Pierre was also on the bowling team, so. She bowled for five years. We have lots of kids. We only had one seventh grader. So everybody else was older, but next year, I know it's already six or seven of them expressed interest. Last week, we got the rising seventh grade night, so.
That's a lot more next year, I think. Well, well done, guys. All right, I'm ready for it. All right, next up we have our student representative, Jared Johnson, is going to give us the news of what happened.
Okay, so we start with because our daddy's name, he had a college that he was, uh, maybe, um, quite a bit. Um, along with that, um, this new classroom is going to be in Boston, another school to have many things to look at other than just have a, um, that's funny. And yeah, there's a new classroom building that I don't know if there's a lot to eat. And somewhere we had, in the GSA, uh, we had our middle school at we, it can be entirely yearly lit. And the work that we did a lot, um, it's something that I think is a lot of positive feedback and possible practice for us to try to perform it. Um, and for the new dorms and musicals, which is one of the last people. And that was very well, had a lot of, a lot of players and a lot more to go down in the practice thing. Um, the stuff we just discussed is, it makes together a women's social project and education. So that children are very, yeah, and working on the students and having these visits in this basement and that is, is not, it is going to be difficult. Uh, classic twenty twenty four has a basketball and a baseball. So it's not a good, so they're fine. And sports and shot and everything else. Um, we have a wellness program on our website. Uh, and and for this, the rest we want, and I love a little, I'm sorry, I found, uh, three, two, and most of them are two. Um, and then, um, actually all the depth, uh, exactly the, we have a lot of things, uh, if it's not, uh, I see, and it's not a mistake. Um, I think that's and then giving to the, we study the. And even after, we're getting on the, the, for, after nine theaters and other days, I don't know. I just do it physically, so it's not going very well, but it's another part of it. I just, I'm ready to advise you. And I think that, um, definitely the technology is always, um, there's another thing.
Is there any questions for Pierre? All right. Okay, next up we have our two friends on the ball.
I sure am. Uh, when we get back to sharing. All right, well, I don't know. We start with news. Um, I don't wanna jinx it, but we have had no snow days, uh, this year, which means the seniors aren't happy about that, but everybody else is, I think. Um, so Monday, June tenth, uh, remains our last day of school, uh, for this year, and uh, they do have, students do have a half day this coming Friday to allow for professional development, uh, in the afternoon for our faculty and staff. Enrollment as of the March first, uh, we're at six hundred and nineteen, uh, students. Uh, it was brought to my attention recently on this grid that I share, uh, monthly that there's a notable exception about, um, that, that it doesn't include necessarily all of our students. So students who are outplaced, uh, aren't, aren't listed here. So moving forward, I'll begin to add another uh, row there so that you get a full picture about how many students we really have. Those students will be aggregated together so that they aren't, um, called out by grade level, uh, but just so that you're, you're aware. I appreciate the feedback that I got. Chronic absenteeism, uh, still a challenge, uh, and still a problem. So I did solicit uh, some interested parties to join in a little bit of a focus group, uh, and I thank the six people who expressed interest. We had our first meeting uh, yesterday and, uh, the, it was a nice brainstorming session. We spent about an hour, uh, talking about what we think are the root causes of chronic absenteeism. Uh, but more importantly, how can we change the tide, uh, there? And so, uh, we talked about home visits. We talked about using our, um, focus program, uh, to regularly communicate, um, with families about, uh, attendance issues. Uh, and we decided to try to launch, uh, some incentives, uh, for students, uh, to get them, um, re-engaged. And so I drafted a, a letter, uh, that we will, um, send to local businesses and organizations to solicit some donations from them that we can raffle off to students who, um, show improved attendance as well as perfect attendance. So there's a balance there, right? We talked about the, if, if a student can't make perfect attendance for any number of reasons, we don't want them to be disengaged, but if they can improve their attendance, then, um, then that's the goal here. So you're gonna hear more about this in the coming weeks as we, um, as we build this as we fly, uh, but we do plan to launch it, um, in the coming weeks so that we can try to, uh, improve student attendance over the last ten weeks or so, uh, of school. The numbers of students who are chronically absent is, is concerning, not just here in Lee, uh, but across the state. So we, um, and, and as you are probably well aware, uh, the, the, the department and, uh, the commissioner, um, and the secretary of education have been promoting uh, absenteeism, uh, that the, the battle against chronic absenteeism. Um, it's noted though that we get Albany news stations out here, so we don't necessarily see those. Uh, so I'm gonna try to do a better job of pushing that information out, uh, to families so they're getting access to it. Uh, health and wellness, just really quickly, uh, we're, we're hopefully heading into spring. It feels like spring at least. Uh, but, uh, we still have concerns about, um, about COVID, uh, that's not going away. Changes to CDC protocols are are coming our way. We're sure, uh, the mass DPH is probably going to adopt those changes, uh, in, in the coming weeks. Uh, but, uh, we do have COVID tests available at both schools, so if families want to access those, especially as they get ready to head to to April vacation and return from traveling, uh, to I'm sure fun and exciting places that we wanna make sure they're coming back safe and healthy. And of course, masking always is an option and choices by students and staff will always be supported by us. Quick update on the budget. Um, we had a finance subcommittee meeting before, uh, tonight's full committee meeting, uh, where the, uh, the subcommittee uh, supported, uh, moving forward with a budget that comes in at a five percent increase over FY twenty four. Uh, what that means, if, um, if that's successful with the full committee in April and that town meeting is that we are a mostly, uh, level serviced, um, budget. Uh, so we, we did make some difficult decisions along the way, but as we've talked about many five different iterations of a budget were presented, lots of thought went into the planning, um, of that budget to best meet the needs of students uh, and our community, uh, at large. So, uh, I'm happy with that where we are. Uh, the public budget presentation will happen on April the second, uh, where the full committee will have an opportunity to, um, to vote, uh, to move that forward. Also, uh, at the subcommittee level, uh, tonight, uh, we talked about, uh, leveraging some school choice funds uh, to update the paving at the, uh, we elementary school playground, uh, to make it safer for students, uh, and, and the community, uh, to use that space during school hours and after school hours. So thanks to the committee for supporting that. The Student Opportunity Act, uh, has been in effect for, uh, three years. We're going into year four. Uh, the town will receive about thirty-four thousand dollars in additional chapter seventy funds. Uh, there is an application process, uh, to prove to the department how we are going to spend that thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, I think I, it's important to note that the application we submit for thirty-four thousand is the same application that gets submitted uh, for districts that are receiving millions of dollars. Uh, so it is, I'll be honest, it's, 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 it's a lot of work. Uh, not overwhelming, but it's a lot of work. The focus for us, um, will be on English learners, students with disabilities and low-income students. Um, the focus will be on the implementation and continued implementation of high-quality instructional materials, uh, so that all of those focus groups can, um, better access or equitably access the curriculum. Uh, we use data from DESI to set targets. We also surveyed, uh, our community, our school community. We got back a hundred and seventy results, uh, which I was very impressed by. Uh, so thanks to everyone who did take the time to answer, uh, that brief survey, but it was important to help guide the, uh, the application. Early literacy will continue to be a subset of the focus and the plan does need to be revisited annually, uh, so I will update the committee. Uh, it is an agenda item under new business, uh, for you to vote to approve that application. Uh, the, again, these bullet points summarize, uh, what is in the application, uh, if you approve it. Uh, the town is asking if there, uh, might be some individuals who may be interested in participating in a focus group, uh, with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, uh, to talk about internet, um, access. Uh, participants will be provided with lunch or dinner, depending on what time the meeting is, and a thirty-dollar Visa gift card, uh, for an hour and a half of time. Um, so if, if there is anybody, uh, watching the meeting, uh, who is interested, uh, they are particularly looking for, um, parents of public, public school students. So if anyone's interested, uh, feel free to contact me and I will share your, uh, name with, uh, Chris Britton. And that's what I have for you folks. And that's what I have for you folks.
Next up, we have our principals and directors reports. First up, we have.
Hello, everybody. Uh, we have a kindergarten workshop, uh, ready for tomorrow, like we scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, March thirteenth. At six thirty PM in the library. Uh, during this workshop, our kindergarten team will review the information packet that was, uh, sent out to families and that is available in our main office for families. For incoming kindergartners. Uh, they'll review that and answer any questions that people may have. Um, those screenings and everything is starting up this spring, and this is a great opportunity to have an incoming kindergartner. Uh, to get a lot of information and have full access to myself and the team, trying to answer any questions. So I encourage you to go to that meeting tomorrow, uh, if that's the case. Uh, we held an assembly today at LES for grades K one and two, uh, put on by the Berkshire Music School. Uh, they read a story, uh, that was written and illustrated by Norman Rockwell called Lily Was Different. Uh, they projected the illustrations, read the story aloud and played a live score, set the book, um, using several different role instruments. Uh, they also had a very spirited question and answer session afterwards that was fun to watch. Uh, did a great job explaining the different instruments used for that. I thought it was very well received by our young members. Uh, the kindergarten team participated in math professional development today. This was the last grade that participated in math PD. Uh, grades three to six took part in math labs over the past couple of months, and I would say that it was a very successful venture that we had. Very unique, that in my twenty-three years of teaching, I've never seen a PD done this way during the school day to the, to the way it was, to the level it was. Uh, I think there was a lot to take away from that. At least that's the feedback that I got by. It was a good survey. Uh, second, progress reports for quarter three, we'll be sent to parents and guardians of students in grades three to six this Friday. Uh, reminder that quarter three grades close in just a few short weeks, on March twenty-ninth, and quarter four, which is hard to believe, starts in the morning first. Our monthly walk to school event started back up this month with a very good show of students, staff and faculty members. Uh, thank you to the lead fire department, the EBD, EMS and EDW to help ensure, uh, the safety of everyone participating. Uh, a reminder that MCAS assessment takes place twenty-seven days from now. Uh, the MCAS season is beginning. Uh, ELA for grades three to six will take place in April. Math for grades three to six will take place in May, and fifth grade will also have their science, tech and engineering test, uh, in May as well. Uh, the complete schedule, I will use, again, sent out to families and other newsletter. Uh, and they're available on our website as well, uh, if you need access to those. Uh, summer school planning has begun. All LES families were notified this week with details for this year's program, as well as for the criteria used by faculty that we use to recommend schools. Uh, starting this week, faculty members will be reaching out directly to parents and guardians of those students who are recommended to participate in summer programming. And I encourage you to reply or to reach out to, uh, to the teachers of your student if you have any questions about why they were recommended. If you have any questions about the program itself, I'm always available. Uh, we held a pretty successful community reading day last week, involved twenty-three members from the community. It included police, fire, local business, town government, even a school committee member. Uh, special thanks to the PTO for providing breakfast, pastries and poppies for our LES. It's always a fun activity and it's always something to see here. It's, uh, school resource officer in a pack of hats, trying to find one of the small trees out front. Uh, the robotics team is participating in Berkshire County Robotics Competition this Saturday at the former regional high school. Uh, each team was asked to create a way to share a hobby of theirs, as well as a way to get people interested in it. Uh, this particular group, uh, loves sketching and drawing, so they were able to, uh, create a solution. Their solution was to create, uh, interactive set of displays that teach participants how to sketch at different ability levels. Uh, these displays were upped and shared with faculty and staff this week, and it was very impressive to watch, and I wish them the best of luck this Saturday.
Questions for that?
Uh, I just very, very certainly, um, MCAS, April, May, we're going to hear later in. About, uh, a playground, it's potential work difference between the foods and what God do. Um, what, any concern about those two things bunched into each other? Yes. Cause I know that. So I know when I was in Hill, if you're still watching the sheary outside, I would not to. Yeah. So is there, is there any? Any way to, I mean, I'm sure we can't do MCAS. Is there any way to work with any special vendors in the town?
It's early April, so it's, I mean, looking at calendar, it's, um, it's actually the second week of April. Um, so yes, if, if there's a way to avoid it, obviously it will be a reluctant side of it. Then that leaves distraction and, you know, you can ask any faculty member. I said it over and over, it's an all-hands-on-attack approach for the entire school. Um.
I'd be lost.
Yes, I was gonna say, no, that's the goal is to that, have anybody, I don't. Be reactive at all. It's a very good point. One of certain, uh, you know, the intention that goes.
I loved that. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Well. Next up, we have, uh, when you mentioned the.
All right, thank you. Um, Karen also actually already mentioned several of my notes, so. Let's skip a couple things. Um, I did want to say, uh, congratulations and Bravo to the drama program. Um, everyone involved in the director, to the cast crew and the parent supporters. For what was really an exceptional series of performance of last week, and it was. I, I'll admit that some of the content had me sliding down. Um, but, um, it was an incredibly, uh, great performance. I went on Saturday night. It's just amazing. Good job to all of you, uh, in the drama program. At this Friday's half day, LMHS staff will be working on curriculum development as well as Alice refresher training. Alice is our client. Um. Active shooter lockdown type scenario, um, training that we use until the state gets the new after model, um, pushed out since. Um, seventh grade core teachers will also be visiting the sixth grade teachers to start learning about the relevant subjects. Next Tuesday, as Karen mentioned, is our annual wellness speaker. Um, it is John Morel. Uh, he's a motivational speaker who was here about eight years ago, actually, and did a phenomenal job. Um, and when we were talking with the wellness committee, uh, his name came up again because it was so well received. And there was nobody left in the building, um, as our students were, they were here at that point in time. So it's, I, I'm really looking forward to seeing John again, um, who does, who does fantastic. Also, next week on Thursday from five to seven PM, the middle school is holding its annual spaghetti supper. This is a fundraiser for middle school field trips, uh, mostly happening at the end of the year, but other times as well. Tickets can be purchased ahead of time. It's ten dollars for adults, five dollars for students and senior citizens. Um, and it is an authentic sauce that is made, um, for the pasta, homemade sauce, so. And homemade meatballs, so if you're able to join us, please do. Um, a little earlier than Tim's, MCAS season begins for us on March twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. With a grade ten ELA test, um, with other grades following the. Um. And then I did want to mention one thing, um, next week, every weekday night from four PM to midnight. Um, there'll be police training occurring here at LMHS in the C V hallway and auditorium over there. Um, so that part of the building will be off limits to anybody other than those involved in the training. And we have officers tomorrow over Berkshire County coming, uh, to do some, uh, to be involved with that training. So if you drive by, something next week, you can see a whole bunch of police vehicles out there. It's okay, um, nothing, nothing bad is going to. That's all I have.
Any questions for that?
Who's this makes this authentic sauce?
I don't know.
That looks like Nicole has a question.
I, just really quick, I don't have a question, just two comments. I just wanted to say, one, I saw the play with my daughter and her friends. I loved it, the talent was wonderful, it inspired her to want to do drama even more. Um, really enjoyed the play, so great job to all those students involved. And two, I just wanted to mention also, um, to bring more positive, that the family information night that was put on at LMHS by Greg. Um, for the students going to middle school, because I have one, um, was really well done, well organized. Um, answered all of our questions, gave a lot of information. I know a lot of parents, um, left there feeling like that was a really valuable, well-run, well-organized night. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, it was really helpful.
Yep. All right. Next, we have Jen Martin with special education.
Um, there's not a lot of updates for special education from the last time we met. I do want to remind people that if you have a student that's going to be either three or four by October first. Um, of twenty twenty-four, we are doing, um, preschool registrate, not preschool screenings the week of. April twenty-second, um, they can call my office to make an appointment. Even if your child is not attending Lee, we would like to do those screenings. It's just really good information. It's also a way that we can child find if you have any concerns about your children as far as possible special education or any related services. Um, that's definitely a good time to have your child come and screen. We, we have occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, as well as the preschool teacher are all available, um, for that. So it's, uh, it's, it's a big event. We had a lot of participation last year, um, and we're already got, we already have, I think, over fifteen or close to twenty, um. Uh, appointments set up, so that's wonderful. Um, we do still have openings for paraprofessionals in both buildings, so if you know of anybody who is looking to work, um, please have them. Fill out an application in the business office or call my office directly to set up an interview. And we are always, always, always looking for subs for teachers and paraprofessionals in both buildings. Um, and so definitely get ahold of the business office if you're interested.
Any questions for them? Right. We won't have a facility.
We, we, we don't, uh, we did, um, conduct interviews, uh, last week. Uh, we interviewed, uh, seven people. Uh, we've extended an offer to one individual. Uh, we expect to get a response, uh, by the end of the week, uh, this week, so I'll be able to update the committee shortly.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have our community report.
Uh, warrants. Uh, so we met earlier, uh, this evening, uh, planned to be. Talking about a lot of stuff money-wise, but, uh, we did talk about warrants, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Jasner, uh, for accounts payment.
So we had two accounts payable warrants in this past, since our last meeting. The first one was on February fourteenth, it was for one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. And the large vendors, uh, included due for EverSource and Fitzville Public Schools. And our second warrant was on February twenty-eighth. It was for one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. And the large vendors there were Hillcrest, Sprague and Trafara. So the total of the two warrants is three hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Thank you. I will have a motion for the account payable.
I'll make a motion. Except the one. Three hundred fifteen dollars and one is. Two hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
We have a second.
Oh, second.
Any discussions? Brenda, can you do a little call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yeah.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yeah.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Uh, payroll was. So we had our two regular payroll warrants and one small additional warrant since our last meeting, and the total for that. Is six hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. I'm taking a motion for payroll. Make a motion to approve payroll, uh, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second? How second? Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a little call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Same.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Okay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
I just added, uh, our next meeting, April second, uh, within our, our, uh, public, uh, budget conversation, pretty important meetings, so. All of us and anybody out there. Big one.
Coming vote. Also.
Where do you see that?
Yeah. And that is the first Tuesday, not the second Tuesday of the week. Um, next up, we.
According to the one, is it possible for me just to give a little update just to the whole school committee about the process we've gone through with the budget?
Sure.
That works. So. Uh, as, as you heard, we've done five iterations, but I just wanted to provide every moment of information on where we've started, what's been impacting the budget and where we're at. So. The big item is impacting our budget for next year are, we have contracted salary increases of two and a half percent. The Esser funds, uh, end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We have an increase of the number of students attending vocational programs. An increase of students in outplace special ed services. An increase in OSD's tuition rate for private, uh, tuitions of four point six nine percent. And as of January first, our electricity cost is increasing by forty-two point four percent. January twenty twenty-five. Yes.
Right.
So.
No, it's okay. Right. No, you didn't.
Okay. Um, so through this iteration, we, we have had five, uh, budgets. The original budget, uh, was for eight, had an eight point one five percent increase. But if we included the attrition of a grade three teacher and an elimination of the LMHS intervention list. That brought that proposal down to six point seven percent. We're not going to discuss two because we moved on from that pretty quickly. So, uh, the third iteration was predominantly level funded at four point eight percent increase. It included the elimination of one clerical staff at LMHS, the reduction of an ELA teacher at LMHS from a one oh to a point six FTE. And elimination of the Esser-funded interventionalists at LMHS. Iteration four was a predominantly level service budget, which premissed five and a half percent. Which included the same reductions as in the fourth generation, or the third generation, but we added in some supplies back into the budgets. And then we ended tonight with, uh, a five percent increase, which is a blend of three, of, uh, iterations three and four. And that budget was supported by the finance subcommittee. And then the next slide will show you. The summary sheet, which those of you who are that are here see, which will, you'll see version one, three, four and five.
Okay. Just when you say a blend of the two, is, are you meaning like the same, um, like we got you, but.
No, so what, so.
We're not allowed to talk about it. Okay.
So versions five, so in versions. Four, we replaced. Sorry, wait. At versions three, we reduced the curriculum coordinators. And versions four, we put it back in fully funded. And version five, we reduced that by fifteen thousand dollars. And then also in version five, because the electricity increase isn't going until January, I originally had it in for the whole year. So those two changes brought it down to a five percent. So everything else is the same, it's just their curriculum coordinators was reduced by fifteen thousand and the electric was, um, adjusted. Four and five. That's the half percent is probably fifty thousand dollars. That's three, four and five, right?
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Eric? Moving right along. All right, next up, we have old business with our LES.
Uh, I don't have it. Uh. Let me see.
Paul, uh, super center, I'm just pulling that up. Um, we do a lot of assessments in, uh, elementary school. At least that, you know, especially in the early, uh, childhood grades, K one, two. Um, during one of the, I believe it was the curriculum subcommittee, we had, uh. We were asked to, you know, try to put these together to get a good understanding, uh, for the types of assessments that we're doing and where the new assessments fall into place. Um, and we just created a comprehensive list, uh, that we'd like to share with you, just so that you're aware of the assessments that we use. Um, just, we'll start from the top here. Uh, the new ones that we use are growth measures for HMH, uh, in math and. We do that for grades one, one to six, three times per year, and we do kindergarten, uh, once in the spring. And the reason for kindergarten only having once in the spring, it requires the use of a phone book. And if you ever asked, I will, if you do phone book, that should convey my age. The reading components, that's the ability to do it itself. The reading components, that kind of ability, so. This gives us in the spring an opportunity for, uh, teachers to, um, teach, you know, the students how to log into their phone book, which is a very long process. And then getting them through that first, uh, growth measure assessment. And that gives us pretty good data in terms of placing students in the fall, as well as having a nice snapshot in terms of, of the glory of math. And the reading level, uh, starts this year. Uh, we also use H M H module assessments. These are teacher run. Teachers can create assessments with specific modules. Uh, it's pretty flexible in that way. This isn't something that's necessarily used across the board, uh, but there are teachers, uh, getting used to this particular feature that's pretty stick. And it's something that also you can encourage them, uh, as we move forward, because it gives teachers the ability to, uh, give snapshots into how students are doing specifically in modules that they're. They're learning from and attending. And those tests also mimic, uh, H M H pretty well. Another opportunity for students to, uh, be able to. And be able to do it in many parts. For grades one and two, instead of regular growth measure, there's the H M H structured literacy module inventory, which is, uh, you know, gets into those early reading skills. Uh, and it's something that, again, we, we tried this year for the first time, because this is the first year we're implementing the reading. Us doing the E L A series that we have through H M H. So this is an assessment in addition to. The, uh, growth measure assessment that we're using, especially in the most early grades. Uh, an old favorite of ours is that Renaissance Star benchmarking for reading the math. Uh, we do that across the board, uh, for grades two to six. And we also use a version of that for K to six. Uh, where it gets into those curriculum based measures, uh, where they're able to do these quick snapshots, uh, where our interventionist not only push in and support students and pull out. But we do a lot of this, uh, quick snapshots, star Renaissance testing. We do quite a bit for those early grades especially, uh, but we also do it for some of the upper grades as well. Going down the list. We've got some others that are kind of specific to certain students in certain circumstances. Like the Columbia assessment, uh, we use, uh, for certain students who are identified as being below grade level. Uh, and usually for any students who've gone in, individualized education plan or program. Uh, nineteen and it's hand covered vision and comprehension. Uh, we also need the click phonics screener for some students. Uh, we use that for all of grade one students. And some of grade two who are identified below grade level, as well as students who are on nineteen and, uh, grade three students who are also on a ninety. Uh, we also do the V A N and the V O N, depending on how you want to say it, which is a test of concepts. We do this for all kindergarten students. This does, uh, this covers quite a bit. It's about like the basic relational concepts are important for language and cognitive development. It gives us a good snapshot, especially in those early weeks that we have these, uh, new five-year-olds coming in. Uh, or any grade one student, uh, or even grade two, sometimes who are below grade. So just give this like a snapshot. And then we, uh, getting into phonics, we do the phonological awareness profile, which again just covers early literacy skills. We do this with all K students. And some grade one students who are identified as below. Uh, and we do qualitative spelling inventory as well for some grade one, grade two. That's also for H M H. Which is another assessment that we're, um, using this year and getting used to using. Uh, it's something that we hope to be more of next year to get a fullback data. On more widespread, widespread across grade one and two. Uh, we also have the li- level of literacy intervention, which is reading. And that's, uh, for grades K to six for students who are on a ninety. Uh, and then we do peer assessment, which is formally edulastic. This is something that we piloted last year. Uh, we're still considering whether we want to extend that into next year. Uh, it's, it's something where there's like an end past question generator where teachers can generate questions. They can also pull from thousands of end past questions. And create their own assessments based on, um, the different standards and the search by standard. But what we found is the module test, the H M H is very similar. So it might be something that we don't necessarily extend into next year, and we may just use those model assessments. Uh, but it's something, again, we piloted and we tried, uh, we made, uh, subset as we look to use, uh, H M H. And then we have H M H Amira, which is for math and E L A. And then we're currently reviewing that. Uh, that is like a progress monitoring type program. But it isn't real as robust as what STAR is. So I don't think Amira is ready for, uh, for real time yet in terms of us leaving on that. And then given where the STAR, because STAR just gives us such great data, uh, that we can't give that quality and level of data up. Uh, but again, as H M H continues to evolve, if we are to post something that is more robust. Uh, it may be a question we ask for the year two or three or whatever, uh, whether we want to, you know, sunset STAR and Renaissance and go just. And on the next page, I just created a little list of, um. Assessments that we use in the H M H and then what it was replaced with. So there's a lot of assessments going on for sure, focusing on reading and, uh, and math and E L A. Um, that's just kind of a snapshot. I know that was a lot, but. That's just kind of the game, what we use to collect the data to try and best to support students and, you know.
All right. Next up, we have new business. First on the list is, uh, donation.
So they're, uh, just going to read a quick, uh, summary. Uh, as you know, the, the committee, um, is responsible to approve donate, dope, financial donations. And so. A quick summary of what's happening. A few weeks ago, author Ty Allen Jackson. Reached out in hopes of expanding his Danny Dollar Academy Entrepreneur Program. Program is designed for fifth grade students and comes with a complete math and E L A curriculum, along with books that accompany the curriculum. The program would kick off in April, fight, which is Financial Literacy Month, with Ty meeting with the entire fifth grade team via Zoom to explain the program and answer questions. This is also when books would be distributed to all fifth grade students. From April to June, students would spend time reading the book, completing lessons and working on their business plan. The program ends on June fifth with an entrepreneur fair. Where Ty would meet with each group, hear about their business plan and give them feedback. Families and other stakeholders would also be invited to attend. The total cost of the program is five thousand dollars. This includes the curriculum, books. Two author visits with Ty and all supplies that are needed for the fair. Adams Community Bank has generously donated five hundred dollars. We've asked the P T O for a five hundred dollar donation as well. The other four thousand dollars is being generously offered to us as a donation from the Smile Like Jack Memorial Fund. The fund is in memory of Jack O'Brien, was young entrepreneur himself, and his family in the foundation said this project is a perfect one to sponsor. More information on the Danny Dollar Academy, uh, can be found online. Uh, the same with the Smile Like Jack, uh, information. So. That, uh, that is from, uh, Jen Carlino, uh, who's, uh, spearheading this work. And I would ask, um, the school committee to accept, uh, the donations from. Uh, Community Bank, the P T O, and the Smile Like Jack Foundation.
I make a motion to send donations from P T O, uh, and Community Bank and the Smile Like Jack.
I need a discussion.
Quick question. Um, you mentioned that the first meeting with Ty would be on Zoom. Is the second one in person?
That, uh, that's my understanding. Yes, Michelle.
Okay. Just as long as, um. I would like to kind of put that in there just to make sure it is in person, because he's very dynamic. I know him and he's a very dynamic person. I think Zoom is great, but. If you bring him into the school, the kids go a little crazy. So it's fun. Crazy in a good way.
Any other discussion? All right, Brenda, roll call us.
Mister Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mister Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have, um, the Student Opportunity Act that Mike, um, described earlier.
So the, the application requires me to, uh, note that the school committee has been, uh, has approved the application and the source, uh, the target of the funding. Uh, so they need, I need to tell them the date, uh, that the, uh, committee approved, if you do, uh, that you approved, uh, for the plan for the funding. So again, the focus area is on those. Uh, three groups, English learners, special ed students with disabilities and low-income students, focused on, uh, early literacy and implementation of high-quality instructional materials.
A motion to approve, uh, the application for the Student Opportunity Act, including, uh, the target areas that were presented by.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us? Mister Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mister Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have the Lee Elementary School Playground.
So the, uh, Lee Elementary School Playground, uh, has been worked on over the last couple of years. Uh, an im- an important, not quite final step, but important step. Is to, um, improve this, the state of the asphalt, uh, including the access road from the back of the elementary school to Hartwood Circle. Uh, and, um. The finance subcommittee, uh, met earlier today. Uh, the project was explained to them. Um, and, uh, they voted to support, um, the use of, um, of. Just, uh, just under a hundred thousand dollars of school choice funds, uh, to, um, resurface, um, the playground. Uh, and expand some of the hardscape, uh, to bring it closer to the building to eliminate the, um. What was, I think, very casually referred to as the mud pit, um, uh, that is around the school. I support this. I think it'll be an important project. It is, it is being done in, um. Conjunction with, um, interested stakeholders who are really advocating for this project to get done.
All right. My thinking for the playground. I make a motion to, uh, through, using my, um, school choice, uh, for the elementary school playground. Brenda, can you roll call?
Mister Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mister Langwa? Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is selecting a May meeting date, because Mike has to be at Tearingham for our original meeting date for their.
Their town meeting.
Can I just put on April, maybe April second, April second? Okay, yes.
The ninth. No, that's town meeting. I'm sorry. So, uh, town meeting is the ninth, so it's the following Monday. So it's the thirteenth. That's, um.
I mean, we always want to make the beginning of the year.
Right, the fourteenth is Tearingham.
Can you repeat those? We can't hear what you're, what you're saying for dates.
The second Monday in May does not work for us to have our school committee meeting. So we're having it, we're proposing having it on the first Tuesday, on that Tuesday, not Monday, which is the seventh. Does that work? Yes.
Nicole shaking her head.
Yeah, okay. So then we'll have it on the seventh. The other thing to remember, what we were just discussing, is that our April meeting is the first Tuesday. Of the month, not the second Tuesday of the month, because we have to have it within a certain. Number of days of the town meeting.
So April second?
I think is one of the meetings, the first Tuesday, not the.
Thank you.
Uh, so I would like to add, you know, the public emphasis about the Boys Across and allowing eighth graders. So I would like to make a motion to send the Boys Across policy. To the policy subcommittee for, uh, review and to, uh, grant a waiver. Uh, for those eighth graders who wish to participate effective immediately.
I'll second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call, please?
Mister Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mister Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right. Future business is when our next meeting is, which is April second. We just talked about that. And our last thing is. The German. Any discussion? Brenda will call us out.
Mister Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Mister Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mister Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight oh five.